...benefits that you get that and that's, that's what made that position that somebody would want it, you know.
Right.
Offering that by the county, you know, for them to get their insurance. I don't think it represents the vision of the, of the needs.
Just the major medical?
And because if you took that away, I don't think you'd get it, you'd make a big mistake.
Right.
It was designed essentially long.
Right.
But it keeps from paying somebody over time every, yeah.
Have a good day, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Well, if you have any thoughts on it, feel free to bring it back as well.
All right.
And then let us know what your thoughts on that Christmas Eve.
Yes.
Okay, miscellaneous bills approved first and third meeting of the month. Uh, we've kicked this around all year. I think we're getting good about first and third. So we handle the bills twice a month instead of once a month. Michelle, you're sure you're... You like it? You guys have any qualms about that, paying bills twice a month?
No, but it says miscellaneous bills only, or is that, is that supposed to say miscellaneous bills or just bills?
Michelle, did you mean it's...
Um, it just always, it's just kind of adopted as an approval, so that's just how they have paid. I can look like all.
Can just make it bills.
Okay.
And then payroll approved, first meeting of the month payday will be first day of each month. I think that one's, and then these are the Mondays, correct, the dates that you have here?
Um, those dates were for last year.
Oh.
I did not update those for this year yet.
Another question about payroll.
Six.
On the payroll, um, we had some discussion about when it's approved versus when it's paid last year. And with the adoption of ADP, it may be standardizing some of that coming out. I just want to make sure you three as commissioners have what you need to review that. So that if there is something that you're not going to approve, um, it's tough to claw that back once it's paid.
Did they give you a timeline, like once however it's submitted or whatever? What their timeline for turnaround is to where? Would it work for us to have the Monday before whatever the first is to approve it? To give us time?
Is there a reason payday can't be ten, the tenth each month?
Oh, you're saying approve it on the first and then?
I know that that would be a one-time shift that...
And I did have one other thought on this one. When, I wondered if it's availability to give people the option if they want to be paid monthly or twice a month? And when I visit with ADP, I did ask them, if some people want to be paid twice a month, can they? If some people want to be paid once a month, can they? And he said, yes, they can do that. So if that would be something that we would choose to offer, what would that look like on something like this in regards to approving the payroll?
My only objection with that right now is, there's a lot of change to begin with, what's not well known.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's a good question, and I think we should build those questions into kind of... What do we want a more permanent payroll solution to be? And I think 2025, especially in working with ADP, is going to be spotting some of those issues that maybe we can improve. I, my hunch is that it would be good to have it as, as an established payday for every employee. So if you're gonna move to bi-weekly or twice a month, just do it for everybody. Um, because really that's a, it's just a savings. The, the rationale for someone wanting to be paid twice a month is just to help them with their personal finances. And whether you pay it once a month or once a week, it's still the same amount of money. And I would rather you guys just make it as least complicated as possible. So just pick one way of paying employees and stick with it.
Yeah. I think since we've just chose to outsource payroll, I think we should stick with once a month for the time being. And get through and get that change taken care of, and then maybe look at the options for the others.
But it's a bit, if you're gonna stay with once a month, it's a bigger paycheck. And so if something is wrong, that there's all the more reason that give yourselves time to actually all get together and approve it. And then it goes out some other times. So I don't know if, that this is a conversation for June once ADP is up and running. But the switch in my mind would look like go ahead and pay everyone for a month and 10 days. And then switch it, you know, for the next month.
Right.
That way people aren't waiting for...
And so then we would do payroll on the first Monday of the month?
First meeting of the month.
And then they're paid on the, what'd you say, 10th?
10th, so this month it would have been the sixth, third, third, seventh, fifth. Second, seventh, so obviously the seventh is the last day that it could be for you to approve. And then it'd go out, go on the 10th. I don't know if that would affect your processes, Michelle, at all. I just want...
Some things would have to be adjusted, but...
Maybe ADP could help with that, of just how we can...
They could just be better at the calls, because you know, like garnishments, they come off of things, that's a nice sort of times. But I don't think, I think either their phone call would affect that.
Some people have their bills auto-drafted on that day as well, so there'd be some work with them to have to change up. I think that's another discussion that we need to have.
Okay.
Broader discussion just to logistically make that work.
I know we had at least one issue though last year where if we're, if we're paying out PTO or something like that. And it wasn't quite ready for prime time, then we're in a much worse position trying to claw that back.
Right. Okay, notes for tomorrow on table. And then the banks, repositories, uh, Linden State Bank, Landmark, First National, First Security, Kent State, Kent Superior, Sage City. Did we remove any?
I know you guys were trying to, I thought that you guys were trying to condense some accounts or something in close, so...
Yeah, but I think we still have accounts in every single bank.
Yeah.
To my knowledge.
Yeah.
Um, citizens need our prime.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing with con- condensation was condensing the bank accounts. Was the fact that we had seven accounts and some of them that were taken, they hadn't been used in decades. However, so I know we took quite a few of those and then took that money and moved it into the same. So I believe these are all still have an account. So that we can just approve that. And then Commissioner Districts, District One, Burnlegate City, Scranton City, Burnlegate Township, Dragoon Township, Fairfax Township, Grant Township, Scranton Township, Second Ward and Third Ward of Osage City. Commissioner District Two, Carbondale City, Overbrook City, Elk Township, Junction Township, and Ridgeway Township. Commissioner District Three, Linden City, Melburn City, Olivet City, Quinamo City, Agency Township, Arbonia Township, Barclay Township, Lincoln Township, Melburn Township, Olivet Township, Superior Township, Valley Brook Township, and First Ward and Fourth Ward of Osage City. You got a big area.
Do you know if this has been sent to GIS recently?
I don't know. Probably should, and we...
The, where I had mapped it up like last year was off my Elvis voter mapping street files.
Is that information that's available? Cause there's, there's registered voters and then there's actual census population. And usually the, the commissioner maps are less stringent when it comes to actually, you know, having deviation of how many residents or people in the population within each district than say Congress, which has to be exact. Um, but it may be worth it for you guys to actually look at some of that data before you establish those districts in case there's trends.
Okay?
Cause I think this is an every two, two-year process, is it? To set up the districts?
I think it's on here annually.
Yeah, ours is annually.
Ours is always on here. The last change that I know as a voting street file has changed was early 22.
Well, just for purposes of the next commissioner election, um, in two years, it'd probably be good to get that set as early as possible. Since the candidacy period has started now for fundraising. But you guys may want to look at population.
Yeah, if it's heavily populated in the northern half of the county and you only have one representative for the...
Right.
Also, I don't know, some of your rural communities might not get as many voices.
Right. Yeah, I think that's good. That's up your hands, Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave that one on as notes. So really the one thing that we have today, if everybody's in agreeance, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the holiday schedule. Uh, well, we kind of don't, cause Ryan has some research on that. So actually have out, I'll just need a motion to approve Martin Luther King Junior Day as a holiday. Osage County is closed. Does that cover just this holiday? Did you get that?
Yes, for next week.
Yes.
Just closing that.
Do you move?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Summit.
Set on need, yes.
Summit.
Here's Carrie's second.
Oh, second, yeah, put me on the stat sheet.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Did you get that, Michelle? Okay, so we have lots of notes for next week.
We do have a couple of things. I was just looking at the old reorganization and the couple of things that are on there is where we're appointing the directors of the departments.
Right.
I was gonna research that for you. So the two ones that I know are Roden Bridge and Health Department. Is that correct?
Um, I'm looking on here, just an old one. Health Department, Emergency Preparedness, which that's different now because it's under the Sheriff's Office. Roden Bridge, General Transportation Senior Center, Land Development, Economic Development, Osage County Surveyor. Those, that was just a previous one. And I'm wondering, uh, also that we, that we...
Noxious weed.
Noxious weed.
Yeah, that's something Josh and I had talked about, and I asked him to do the research that if it's necessary that we, we reappoint those every year. Cause to me it seems a little unfair to those positions. We treat them as full-time employees, but yet their job is up every year.
Well, I'm just wondering...
Ask Josh if he would research the statutes to see if it's necessary.
If we have to legally reappoint them every year or not.
Right.
I'm guessing there's a statute since it was in there at some point, but maybe it's changed over time. So that will be on for next week.
Yes.
And then the other thing I saw on here was appointing members to Planning and Zoning Board, and then appoint commissioners to Ecan Board, SOS Board, Lake Region Authority. There are some of those boards also.
Yeah, that would be more term-based for the planning and zoning, I think.
Yeah, I'm just reading what was on previous ones, and I don't know if, again, if it's something that's annually required or if it was on there for that particular year.
Do you have a list of terms, Planning and Zoning Board? For the Planning and Zoning Board, whether their terms...
They are not. It is whenever one decides to leave, then on what area they are presenting you guys.
But they don't serve one or two years or three years, nothing like that?
So that might be something you want to consider is whether any of these boards should have terms associated with them. So I, I'll try to get some information for next week on at least those that were listed and...
Very good. Anything else?
No, on these other boards, I guess they would reach out to us if they need confirmation on who was on those boards.
Maybe, I mean, we can go ahead and put a list together just to prove it, that there's no issues. I think the planning and zoning, definitely we need to look at that one for sure. And then I've got what it's requiring. Josh is gonna research all that. Anything I'm missing? Okay, in the essence of time, we'll move forward from that. Uh, we move to approve the Martin Luther King Holiday. Uh, we have a five-minute executive session with Colleen and Josh since he is in person. So we will have all three commissioners and Josh and I and Colleen Mendoza for five-minute non-elected executive session. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Put us back at 10:20. Kevin?
I think, yeah, that's... Oh, thanks.
Okay. You need a little time to finish that up?
Nope.
Nope. Send it over.
Sending it over.
So, with notice to the county, I think we'll just do fiscal address.
Okay, sure.
If for some reason you need to just get written.
No worries.
Alright, I'm running out of time. I'll send this over. Did you have one more you wanted to do?
Yes.
What if I look it up here?
I got four.
Oh, I told you. And that was for you, this was for me, and this is for you, you two. Okay, the other was... Ten minutes not elected with all three commissioners, Josh and Michelle. So... Are you ready? Okay. I will move we enter into an executive session for ten minutes, none are not elected personnel clause with all three commissioners, Josh and Michelle Morris. Just need a second. Motion's been made in second at all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Alright. No action taken in executive session. So, I will move that we enter into executive session with all three commissioners and Josh and I for a matter of ten minutes, under attorney-client. Need a second. Motion's been made in seconded.
Yes.
Seconded, second.
Oh, I said so.
That's okay. Motion's been made in second at all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It's so comical seeing the new mesh of... I've never seen it before. They were all smooth and accurate, so...
Yeah.
So like, yeah, just what?
Change is not a bad...
It's not.
I mean, it's not, I mean... It's gonna happen, I just...
But change is scary. It doesn't matter what it is, change is always scary.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's true, yep.
It is.
Change is a challenge.
Oh yeah, I mean, probably three things. I didn't... That's right here.
Okay, got it. And that might be David. So, if when they sign, then basically I should sign as well.
And I'll ask if you need to physically be in here right now or I can just call. Are you here all day?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, I'm here all day. I'll, I'll, I can mail see the video, so I'll see if you guys call me or not.
Alright, thank you Commissioner. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
The well and just follows me.
Maybe I assume I get to come up with a real.
Unless I approved it, just didn't realize it. That's not my whole itself.
Everyone all. Just end up three. And then she tells me that's what I was saying. She's for everything that I was. I mean, there's just, there's just crazy. Those who's married, yeah, which is amazing, that's just. Something else that. My dear. I'm interested.
You're right. You would prove in the day three. But this is another one, only one that you needed.
Hey, you put, are you putting in the P O what goes to?
Yeah. I do my name and then what account. It's been working really good for me, just like the. UPS delivers it, talk to them tomorrow. Don't even bring it here, just take it straight up.
One minute. Time's up.
Michelle, if you could catch up.
No, I didn't take either of those. You have the board document, so you can just change it. Hopefully I got it right.
Okay, so Josh, you're.
Just don't make your meetings on Sundays, please.
That will not happen.
Need one mental break.
Okay, so before we get too far. Okay, here's the resolution form. So you've got a resolution establishing elective pay, and you have a resolution establishing county mileage. County mileage reverse.
I've got one thing I need to look up on the.
And then he had. Okay, the contract for Colleen.
That's updated, I believe, is the last one I have.
Well, there's some things you. Yeah, that's, yeah, they did one here, some things they had to carve out.
Homework already.
I know it. You said there's three resolutions you have?
We'll have two. We had the, a contract for economic development, but I don't think Josh left the updated copy.
There's what he just sent me.
He just sent it, good. Let you review that. That's the new and approved employment agreements. All right. I thought we changed that last week. Well, I think dated at seven fifty-five. Last week.
Okay, are you doing?
I was letting Brandon review that employment agreement. You good?
Think so.
Well, I'll sign this one.
Sorry.
That's okay. Did ever, maybe, does it all change?
It's changed all, all the notes I had on there's changed.
Okay, first things first, Heather, did you?
Is that the contract?
Yes.
Yes.
You did that, you're okay? Everything is good? It's the new. So I'll need a motion to approve the employment agreement as made as of, made as of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We're gonna need a new copy of this. Between Colleen Mendoza and Osage County, Kansas, as stated in the employment agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Can you print out a new one? And on the, on the date, it says twenty twenty-four. Number six, yeah, twenty twenty-five. And then on the effective dates, that you can really change. See, that says effective year one twenty-five, shouldn't that be June one twenty-six and twenty-seven? Twenty-six adjusted.
So this will be for next year, not currently?
Yeah, this will take effect currently, the first year. That is the new salary effective immediately. Twenty-six. We'll sign that.
Does she need to come in to sign that now or just get with her apples?
Uh, it'd be beneficial if she'd come sign it now.
Can anyone come down, say she's gonna watch?
There we go. Okay, this Mendoza is taken care of. Now for resolution two zero two five dash zero two, resolution establishing elected official pay. I'll need a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash zero two as stated herein.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't find from last week the breakdown on the county attorneys.
Oh, no, we have a breakdown from last week on the county attorney.
Well, I guess, does she have, so her budget that she had approved is in there. But I don't know what the breakdown is.
Josh got this number from her, so if you'd like to call her.
Yeah, well, I was looking at what she was currently at. I guess what she's currently at and what she's requesting, if I can just see a breakdown of what got approved and then between all the employees, to show that that fits inside of that.
Right, for, for all the employee, because the employee.
Hers, well, her employees, so she's got her approved.
Her, her employees got one hundred and twenty-five each.
Yes, I'm, I'm actually asking on hers. I mean, it's a pretty large jump.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, hers was approved with her budget, and actually there was about seven thousand dollars difference, but she submitted.
Yes, that's what I was looking at, is what was her budget request breakdown that she came in that got approved on there.
Look, it was in the budget.
Yeah, it's a, it's a full dollar amount. And so I guess, since this is such a large change. It's, it's just one lump number, and I, I guess if, I didn't know if she brought it, um, last week. I can't find the stuff that she brought.
No, she did not, because I didn't see an automatic thing that was approved with the budget.
Right.
It went into effect at the beginning of the year, not something that had to come back.
So if you would like to visit with her and get the, you can like give her a call. I think she might be at court.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had what she had brought last week that would show.
She didn't bring anything last week. She just brought her, I say she didn't bring anything. She brought her two employees, had a dollar twenty-five.
Yeah, her, the total is three fifty-three, one fifty-two. For twenty-five. So out of that three fifty-three, as she's got this breakdown, I was just wanting to make, I guess I'd like to see the breakdown of the, what was approved with what she's putting, what was put on there. I guess I just don't remember that dollar amount, I guess, as, of course, the budget cycle was June. So for me, if I could just see that breakdown. Because I know she's got the, um, assistant county attorney, and then she has the other employees. Is there a way to see if she has that, that what she had submitted?
Um, yeah, we have all that paperwork dating way back, all that dates, they're back to budget time. She didn't bring anything yesterday except for her employees, their, their request for them, is all she brought yesterday.
So can we just do this next week? I'll visit with her if she, she, if I can just get that breakdown.
I, we really need to get this, this done. I mean, it's resolution establishing their pay, and I feel like we're just dragging the elected officials' pay out. We've just been keeping on, keeping on, we've been doing this for months, so I would really like to get it done today.
Is hers the only one that's changing?
Uh, no, all of them, yeah.
I don't know what they previously.
All the elected officials essentially got a six thousand dollar annual pay.
I guess, I just didn't realize hers was changing that much. And so I guess for me, if I could just, sure she has a breakdown of what was approved, and then it'll show hers. And so I guess for me, if I could just, sure, she has a breakdown of what was approved, and then it'll show hers, the assistant attorney, and then it'll have the employees, but I just don't remember being that, that dollar amount. Not saying it wasn't.
If you're not comfortable in moving on this today, then absolutely, we can, if we don't have the support, we can move it to next week. I just, we've been kicking.
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't know where it started at, I mean, I don't know what the backstory is on that.
Yeah. So, just for an effort.
I'll have to plead ignorant on it, I guess, sorry.
That's all right, it's better to do that, to make something up.
Sure.
Um, so, let's put this on the agenda for the twentieth, we have to get it settled on the twentieth. We're missing what these people pay, and it's not fair for them, so, um, Michelle, make sure this is on the agenda, please, resolution two zero two five dash zero two. Heather, resolution two zero two five dash zero three, you guys see anything with that? I had Josh just changed the amount to a statement saying Osage County, Kansas shall be the standard federal mileage rate set by the Internal Revenue Service for each year.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
And so then, when we do the reorganization, we'll just pick whatever that?
We're not putting a number in. That's what this is for, this is gonna.
It just matched the federal.
I'll second that motion, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. That way we'll ensure that we'll never get backed up on a certain number.
Make sure I sign the right line.
Tax rule corrections. Lloyd group. So this is the extension for gas, right? This is for you, Lloyd group. Miss Mendoza? Okay.
Which one is, what item?
The Lloyd group. Is this just a letter to them? We don't have a signature page.
Um, I think that was just information.
Oh, okay, well, never mind then, that's just information.
Well, I think we should have a price in here.
Uh, your signature page on the very back of that one?
There it is.
That, that side page just gets bigger down. So we do need. Estimating therapy spending services will be twenty-five thousand dollars, will also be billed for out-of-pocket costs such as work process, social travel center, additional expenses will occur if an amended budget is necessary. And so that's for the moving forward, that's for twenty-six. I think that's what they've been charging since I was here, anyway, right? So Lloyd group is our auditor, you're familiar?
Well, I've heard the name, yeah. So they do the budget work handout at work, or?
Yeah.
Probably that's what's put that up.
And, uh, I'd agree with you, if our county wasn't so messed up right now. But yes, I think, uh, and like I told Heather when I first got here, once we get it fixed and everything's outlined, yeah, I would support putting it up again, but not until it's fixed. And I know we're close, because we got an email from Linda last week saying that our bank accounts have been cleaned up for the most part, all of that is in the beer, it's done, which hasn't happened for long time. So, we'll need a motion to approve the Lloyd group for twenty twenty, for the year ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. So that'll be for the twenty-five, I don't, that's gotta.
Well, we're in twenty-five, so when we start this year, we'll be working on twenty-six.
Right.
Yeah.
The projection, yes.
So this is.
Year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So if I, yeah, and I would like some discussion on this, but this is the document for if we hire him to help us do budget this year.
Right.
Yeah, so, I didn't hear exactly what you said over there, but, um, I would like to separate between budget and the auditor. I've worked with Scott the last four years, and he, um, he responds when I call him, he sends me emails, he'll have a conversation on the phone, he is easy to work with, um, from what he has told me, he's, the county's used him over twenty-five years. The one thing that's always concerned me is that he does the budget and he's the auditor. And I would like to see us separate that. Um, I think that we would need to go with him on the budget, this, because literally, we start working on the budget.
Right.
Pretty much now. So, but I would like to, I would like to call him, because I just read something in there that said something about there won't be a report included with this, and I know the last couple of years, there's been two different, uh, Excel reports that, um, I've asked that we have, and he, he said that he would do those, and then it kind of fizzled at the end, and so I want to determine if those extra reports that he's done or worked on a little bit in the past, if that is or isn't included in this. Um, I would, those two things that he, um, created, one he created, one we got from Atchison County, and he just duplicated it with our information, but it never got finished. I'd like to visit with them a little bit on those, because those two documents are what helps me. The process that they've always used for the budget is really difficult for me, I don't feel like it's enough information. But moving forward, what I, more than likely, I will support using him for the budget. But the caveat would be is that when we get ready to sign a contract for an auditor, I would like us to put it out for request for proposal. I'd like to see us look at separating those in two different entities. But I would like to, I mean, I'd like to finish reading this, I just got this now, um, and call him and talk to him a couple, couple items.
We're building our twenty agenda, twenty-one, agenda. I do not want to get in this habit, though, just saying, we do need to take time to, to review and make sure everybody's on the same page, but just caution to spread things out. But that being said, we'll take that, we'll move on to the next piece, and then we can take the week to review that.
Heather, you were talking about, that, that line right underneath his, on the second page there.
Yes, and I haven't finished reading, but it says the final projection will not be accompanied by a report.
Okay.
There was a really nice report that he created, I think the first or second year we were here, that we've used, that helped some. But there was a really nice Excel financial document that Atchison County had, that last year, when I'd sent it to him, he's like, yeah, we can do that. And it was just an Excel document, and so it's a working document that as we're creating the budget and we're starting to plug in numbers, you just plug it in, and it'll just show you.
Yeah.
This is where you're at, this is where you were last year, and he agreed he was going to do it, but it just never really happened. And I really would like that to be part of this, because when you start working on this.
Sure, well, you can see.
It's generalities.
You can see percent expended and all that other jazz.
You can see if people are, yes, if we had an increase in its spending or decrease in spending. It, um, and I'll, I've got, I've, I can send you the report, the Excel document, so you can see what it looks like and how, I can show you the one Atchison County uses, and they use it as a real-time document, so the, uh, finance officer just keeps it posted on their website, and as they get into budget season, he just updates it.
Yeah.
And people can just see exactly where they're at on the spending in different departments and totals and things like that, so I would like to talk.
We have that same, I'll do, yes, I can say that. But if it's not updated by the people that it's supposed to be updated by, then it doesn't matter, if you look at it, it says fifty percent, it's not right. That's what I've been saying this whole time, and part of the reason why I've been pushing, separating that out for so long is because our books have been so messed up, and that's another reason, there's a lot of pieces to this pie that are not getting stated.
I agree with that, so I've been here four years, and what you just said is what I learned when I came on four years ago, and so we're trying to put those policies.
In two years, we've managed to fix a lot of things, is what I'm highlighting. We've managed to fix a lot. And this year, with Linda back in there, she has gotten a lot of that done, we were really close to being able to get, accomplish what you guys were set out to do. So we'll take the week to review that, we'll come back and have a discussion Monday, when we drop stuff. Um, the next is this time extension request, Osage County Board of Commissioners requesting nine-month time extension. This is the one we approved two weeks ago, correct? This is the letter we have to have for gas.
What's it regards to?
This is the nine-month sewer extension request, the extension, remember, the time, contract extension.
What project, I'm sorry, can I see it?
Say it away.
I'm sorry, I cannot remember.
Oh, just so you know. Yeah, sweet. You all want mine? Heather always turns me down unless I got Sweet Tarts in there. I think the plate. That's because, remember, we had that amendment on the pipe stuff, we got them to agree, but then we had to ask for a project extension.
Yes.
For C D B G. That's the letter we have to have for gas, so they can submit.
Yes, because this affects the loan that we're using to pay for.
The timeframe, correct, yes. I would gladly ask for a motion to approve this, if the name wasn't spelled wrong.
Karen?
You didn't even notice it, did you, Heather?
Uh, what's it say?
It used to be you getting your name.
I know, I used to be the one.
Which document, and I'll see if I can change it off here when they send me.
It's on the letter to Ms. Erdley?
L E S S.
There's two S's in there.
Just.
We'll need a motion to approve, excuse me, the C D B G sewer improvement time extension request, once the name is corrected.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. My name only has one S, and people do it all the time.
Surely it'd been called worse.
Aye. All right. That pretty much takes care of all that, right, now we got tax rule corrections. I'll let you start, is a, is a very thick sheet. Tax rules corrections are fun, they're provided to us by the Appraiser's Office, I just want to have, um, um, amendments to any tax rule, any parcel or anything like that. They fill out this whole form, and then we just have to go through and prove. Yeah, this is the signed sheet, that's all. They can sign, so. They just send it in just like this. You can consult Ben if you have any questions. A lot of these are see like here, common, two feet, silver, personal property, moving for twenty twenty-four of them. That's the reason for the correction. I don't know that we found, in two years, I hope they found one.
Say, so like, it's just public hearing adjustment?
Right.
And so like, the, the living amount stays the same, because whatever, they talked about something.
Right. Yeah, if they were denied their, you know, appeal.
What's the, what's the difference between informal, public hearing adjustment, and then a public hearing adjustment?
I think it's just whoever wrote the report, because they should be the same.
All I got is questions, I don't have any answers.
That's all right. These are all personal property, and that's all tax rule correction, okay. There should be. Who wrote it, who filled that out? I thought we had the name on it. Michelle approved it too, because it comes through all of us. What is the difference, is there between the personal, um?
Public hearing and informal, informal public hearing and?
Yeah, is there a difference, I think it's just the person that wrote it out, some call it informal, some call it.
Okay.
I've never asked that question before.
The initial comment to my account from the Appraiser's Office, so.
Yeah.
They have a lot more knowledge on that.
Sure. And all this has been through the Appraiser's Office and then?
Yeah.
From the Appraiser's Office to my office, you guys sign off, and then it goes to the project office to be processed.
Nobody ever petitions for theirs to go up?
Actually, we've had a few folks this year, um, that their, by, their properties weren't recorded properly, so they have a project that's done, they've got a permit, and it was never reevaluated, and so this one gal's been waiting two years to get a proper tax bill. And she's been saving money, and she's been contacted, and we got involved, and I think Laura's got it fixed since, but. We all just signed on the same line, we usually just leave a little space.
Okay, doesn't matter where, who goes first?
It should just be an alphabetical order.
What, the? Signatures.
If we had a big issue with any of these, it would, this wouldn't necessarily be the right time to bring it up, would it?
Uh, would, uh, well, it depends on what the issue is.
There's been times we've had questions, and sometimes Matt would come in, or whoever might be the appropriate person, and we would say, what does this mean? Or what happened, and they come in and look at it, and then tell us what it is, so there, there are times we do ask, if there's something that doesn't make sense. So, there, there are times we do ask, if there's something that doesn't make sense.
Okay.
All right. Have you seen them all?
Not the real estate ones. I think I had the trucks and the personal property.
How often do these come through, you say?
Uh, just depends. Sometimes we'll have a huge stack of them, once or twice a month, and sometimes you'll go three or four months without seeing any. Usually, typically, it's about the time you pay your taxes, and people are having their appeals and whatnot, but we'll get a big stack.
All right, they all look different, good job.
All right. So, I will need a motion to approve the tax rule correction sheets for the year of, years of twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-four, twenty-two and twenty-four, brought forth by the Osage County Appraiser. Right? Matt? Brought them forward, or should I say by you in the motion?
As presented?
As presented, there you go.
There you go, I'll, I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Oh, she got it. She worked on that one time.
Okay. What else? Times this down, Lloyd's coming back for twenty, for Lloyd document. Resolution.
Here's those.
Okay, Heather, you want to have anything about?
Um, there is a laptop available, it's used, I think it was the H R laptop, is what Sunny said, so I'd like to take that one and replace mine. It's, I've now got multiple buttons that are falling off, so, you're okay with that? I'm gonna have a used one, or should I find a new one? It's an extra one that's laying around. You're okay with that?
See that as a problem? Do you see that as a problem, Matt?
Yeah, and then the only other question I had was with meeting minutes, if we can maybe get an update on that, and what we can do to help maybe get that caught up.
We're gonna have a meeting with this, Michelle?
Remember, we're getting to do some meetings, do this end of year stuff done.
We're gonna have a whole stack of them?
Yeah, I'm trying to find a unique way to do it a little easier, but...
Hey, aye. We record, on a voice recorder on the early games meetings, so then with Patty sitting there doing it, she just says, turns out, watch recorder on the list, everything. Some reason that you can watch these meetings, and we're still not being picked up, all that, right?
Nope.
And we went through, we did, I mean, we've done it. Just, I'll reserve comment. So, with that being said, uh, welcome. Do you have any last two cents you'd like to put in before we motion to adjourn?
Uh, thanks for answering questions and your patience with me, how about that?
Not a problem. Well, yeah, I don't want to do to you what was done to me. I'm pretty used to being thrown into the fire, and that's what happens, so try to get you on the right speed. I don't feel like a man can make proper judgment if he doesn't have proper information, so, man-o, I'm sorry. Uh, that being said, I will need a motion to adjourn. Yes.
Sure.
Um, I didn't want to just sign this and lay it on your desk. I really wanted to say thank you so much to the Board of Commissioners for supporting economic development. It doesn't happen without your support, and thank you for your trust, and to the community, for their trust in me and leading the effort. And, so I just wanted to say thank you so much. It also does not happen without all of our community partners at every single level, so I just wanted to say thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you, Colleen. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. All right, with that being said, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Heather just adopted it.
I adopted it, because Jay, for, for two years, always...
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Somebody's gotta lead the way.
Well, Jay used to make the motion to adjourn.